Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind-the-scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa. We couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County: It's Life Well Run.
chance to listen to this presentation to come up for public comment. So is there anyone at all from the audience who would like to come up and share a thought, make a comment, either on this or anything else you'd like to address the committee for? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll go to item three, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move.
Q. Is there a second?
Support.
Q. Any item need to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda passes. We'll go to item number four, Board of Commissioners setting the monthly 911 surcharge at $1.15. Daryl?
Yes, this is a request to recommend to the board to establish the monthly 911 surcharge at $1.15 per month. On November 8th, 2016, the Kent County voters approved the ballot proposal authorizing the county to increase the 911 surcharge by 70 cents per month to a total of $1.15 per month per device effective July 1, 2017 through June 30th, 2036. By law, the state 911 committee is the entity required to provide notice to communication providers of any changes of the 911 surcharges in the state of Michigan. The 911 committee requires a county that is going to change its surcharge pursuant to voter approval to provide at the 911 committee with a certified copy of the ballot determination, a certified copy of the Board of Commissioners resolution setting the local monthly surcharge, a letter from the county's 911 coordinator or county clerk confirming the 911 surcharge, and a copy of a completed state form. And all this has to be done by May 15th, so that it can notify the communication providers of the change of the surcharge. To implement the voter-approved ballot proposal, the county Board of Commissioners must approve a resolution to set the 911 monthly surcharge at $1.15.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, discussion points? Yes, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I know I'm going to get folks telling me, well, I thought we just voted in increase sources revenues for 911. Share with me a little bit of the difference. How do I explain to people, yeah, you did vote in an increase for 911, but...
The issue is the ballot proposal is not self-actuating. The state has to turn around and provide notice to all the communication providers so that they put the surcharge on the bills, and they require us to have a resolution from the county to actually implement that. So you are authorized by the voters to do it, the state then requires you actually do it.
I'm with you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Have we had any lockers, or been any movement towards looking at the books of the providers to make sure that they're supposed to take, actually, there was always some questions about...
In Michigan, there's been no change on that front.
We have it as a legislative, on our legislative list, to continue to work toward that end goal, and I think that's where it currently sits. But, so, right, Daryl?
We are monitoring some issues, and the question is whether or not the state would want to tackle this at the legislative end. There are other priorities we know that we can work on and act on more quickly than this, but it's something that if something materializes, we'll be able to work with the state to see that some legislation is adopted.
Commissioner Mast.
Just to follow up on that, but I thought there has been some audits which have tightened up the reimbursement or the payments from the telephone providers, from cell providers. Am I not remembering that correctly? Because I know there's always been a lot of complaint about how accurate are those numbers?
Not aware of any audits in the state of Michigan. It has been more of a story nationally, and there have been some states that have authorizing legislation that have authorized audits, but not in Michigan.
I think there are carriers that have done it independently and have checked it. That's conversations that I've had with people at different networking events who work at providers, but I don't think there's anything from the county or the state that...
Unfortunately, there's no motivation for the carriers to make it accurate.
Right.
So, yeah, so, and I suspect we don't get all the money that we're probably due.
Well, one of the pieces that I double-checked with when we were looking at this is that I believe we have a good sense of where we currently are collecting funds and where we expect this increase to be, and cautiously optimistic that that's what will happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, is it that kind of the gauge? Is that we know what we get now, we're asking for an increase, so I believe we will be able to see if that gets collected to our expectations or not. I had a question that, in looking at this, if I recall, the ballot had a different handling for commercial accounts? Is it... Can you address that, Tom?
It's actually by state law that when you have multi-line phone systems, they don't pay the surcharge on every single line, but they get charged based on the number of trunks.
Yep. But does this address that?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It's all done by state law.
Great. Commissioner Antor.
Just a follow-up. We're going to know this number, so we're going to be able to do our own little math to see if it's matching, but if they could potentially change the denominator and say, we have as many phones as we did, right?
Yeah.
Because we wouldn't know.
Correct.
Even though it's counterintuitive, and we have less phones than what we did a few months ago. So, I'm just wondering, it is a concern, because I know in the past, providers in different arenas have decided to accept the communications fines and penalties as opposed to complying, because it was cheaper to pay fines for being out of compliance than this to comply. I don't know, just got to, I know we're doing everything we can. It'd be nice if the rest of the counties and the state...
Agreed.
Yes.
Right now, the system is set up where the providers get paid an administrative fee, that's a percentage, so that there is some financial incentive for them to turn around and collect the total amount, because they'll receive more money in their administrative fee.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll go to agenda item five from the Bureau of Equalization, amend Alleghan County equalization agreement. Daryl?
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve an amendment of the Alleghan County equalization agreement to eliminate a deputy equalization director position which supervised Alleghan County's equalization department and adjusts the costs accordingly. Alleghan and Kent Counties wish to amend their agreement to have Kent Counties' equalization director oversee the Alleghan Counties' equalization function, with Alleghan County providing its own deputy director of equalization. Kent County will eliminate a deputy director of equalization position due to reduce funding from Alleghan County pursuant to fiscal policy on grants, contracts, and donations. The amended agreement will be effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. Corporate counsel has reviewed and approved the amendment agreement as to form.
Okay, is there a motion?
A move.
Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Yes, Commissioner Talon.
So what happened?
Good morning. So, what you have before you is a simple change to the contract. Last year, we entered into an agreement with Alleghan County to do their equalization director function. And what we did at that time is we promoted, we created a new deputy director position of equalization, and we promoted from within Kent County. Brenda Ritchie, who was our personal property auditor, has now been assigned full-time down to Alleghan County since last June. So what we are doing at this point is we're eliminating that position from the budget, because what Alleghan County is going to do is they're going to assume the cost of that deputy director position, and they're going to take it back onto their budget. The reason that this change is being effectuated is that we have the other deputy director in Kent County is eligible for his full retirement here at Kent County. And so what we are doing is we're essentially going to be having him be hired as an Alleghan County employee, and then we're going to bring Brenda Ritchie back here to Kent County as the deputy director here for Kent County, while our current deputy director, Steve Rickers, is going to go to Alleghan County and be on their ledger, so to speak. So, the reason that we're bringing this to you is because what this does is it allows us to eliminate a position from the budget, while it allows us to keep our team together for the next few years, at least, in order to continue to make sure that this collaboration is successful. So, that's essentially what's happening here, is removing one position from our budget and putting it onto the Alleghan budget. Now, the residual, of course, with that is quite a small amount of money coming back to Kent County and accruing to our general fund. So you might ask, you know, what's in the collaboration here? Well, as you know, it's really a challenge throughout the state of Michigan right now to find ways to collaborate and save money, and so we are in the process of doing that. You may also recall that we're in an agreement with Montcalm County, and we provide their equalization director services as well. So what this move will do is it will allow me, as the director of those three counties, will allow me to have a deputy within each county, because we just recently promoted a internal staff person in Montcalm as well, and allows us to maintain the standards across those three counties for our equalization function. So, the other thing that we're going to be doing is we're going to be reviewing both the Alleghan and the Montcalm contracts within the coming year, and reviewing the overall operation. And on the occasion of Montcalm's contract being renewed at the conclusion of 2017, we will be most likely coming back to you for additional amendments to the collective agreements. So, a lot of thought that went behind this, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
That helps a lot. I just want to make sure I understand. So, someone from your department is retiring, that person is moving over to the payroll at Alleghan...
Correct.
Still reporting to Kent County, to you, through the term of this agreement, is that correct?
Right. Really reporting to me and my function as Alleghan director.
Okay.
Through the Kent County common leadership.
Helps a lot. Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, I was wondering about reporting relationships too, Jim. So, you're the Alleghan director, or you're Kent County director?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm the director of all three counties.
So we're kind of like lending you out?
Well, you know, I, to a certain extent, yes, but not really, because what I'm really looking at this, and one of the things that I've been passionate about, is standardization and looking at various forms of collaboration on a regional level. A portion of my time is being allocated to Montcalm County, a portion of my time is being allocated to Alleghan County, and we are continually reviewing that, and that's why I allude to the fact that we're going to be going through and evaluating all three at the end of this year to make sure that that allocation is fair and based on an actual allocation of time, as opposed to looking at it through the collaboration lens, where Kent County is somewhat of a donor to these other counties at this time.
I guess that's where I'm heading, and I don't understand. So, are the taxpayers of Kent County subsidizing in any way your work in these other counties? I mean, are the taxpayers getting their money's worth from their equalization director?
I believe so. I believe there's been a multiplier effect, and I believe that what Kent County is doing is it's providing the leadership to the larger area, and I think that it's being well-served.
Commissioner Hennessy?
I'm still a little confused on this. So the deputy director in Alleghan County will be paid by Alleghan County?
That's correct.
So, you're the overall director?
Yes.
But does it pose a problem for you then to be, have your deputies actually employed by another county?
No, no, it really doesn't. As the director of equalization, I'm ultimately responsible for the projection of the true cash values and the equalization studies that come out of each of those counties. It doesn't pose any problem, the fact that I have staff in each of the counties performing the functions that I have performing here in Kent. I have similar staffs performing those functions in Montcalm and Alleghan.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I just want to, you know, you do have the supervisory authority then to supervise people, even though they're actually employed by another county? That's what I'm confused about.
It's being contractual, really.
It's all contractual, okay.
Yeah, because I'm performing that service on behalf of those counties as well.
Okay. So do those other counties compensate you?
In the case of Alleghan County, there is a stipend of $3,000. In the case of Montcalm County, there's a stipend of $5,000.
Okay.
So, I'm in it for the good government aspect of what we're trying to achieve here.
Commissioner Antor, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I know long before you took over, started working with Montcalm County, they've had some issues, and those continue to be showing up on the news. I think they're more spending issues. Is there any connections between the revenue collecting and the spending? I know there's a lot of people wondering where the money went. I wouldn't think that's a real comfortable place to be working right now, with all the different... Not accusations, I guess, but...
Yeah.
What's going on in Montcalm County?
Yeah.
Not really a question, I'm just trying to figure out, does that tie you in any way, shape, or form with some of their issues? Are you trying to fix that, or is that just strictly a spending issue that they have a problem?
Well, in my case, of course, you know, we're really concerned about the overall valuation of the property there, and so we do our best to try and come up with an accurate true cash value and assessed and tactical values. How those values then are translated into the expenditure side in terms of how the government run is really not something that I'm directly involved.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Matt Coleman?
So the gentleman who's switching from Kent to deputy of Alleghan...
Yes.
So he'll start collecting his retirement benefits from Kent County? Is this kind of just a retention thing? You couldn't retain him otherwise, so this allows you to retain a skilled long-term employee?
That is exactly what it is.
Okay. Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Jones. Matt, point a little bit to us about the level of certification, I forget now what you call that, but you're at a certain level that...
Correct.
...is needed by state law.
Correct.
You have to have a certain level of expertise in this, and this saves them having one for their county as well.
Correct.
Can you explain a little of that?
Yeah. So I currently hold what's called the Michigan Master, assessing official designation, formerly known as Level 4. There's essentially four levels. And both Montcalm and Alleghan, at the time they entered into the contracts with us, both required a Level 4 equalization director. And really, the impetus for them to approach Kent County was is that we were a neighboring county, they wanted to explore collaboration, and that I had the necessary credential for them to do that, because recruitment and retention of fours has been an issue. Now, subsequent to Montcalm entering into the contract, they have now, actually, they're now a Level 3 county, and Alleghan is still a Level 4 county at the current time. However, Montcalm, based on the collaborative things that we did with some of the aerial photography and the GIS implementation that we were able to help lead on, decided that despite the fact that they were actually, went from a Level 4 to a Level 3, that at least for this coming year, they wanted to maintain that collaboration with Kent County. So they renewed their contract with Kent County a couple of months ago. And then, like I said earlier, we're going to be evaluating that by the end of this year. So, that's the status of the three counties and their levels, and some of the impetus behind the collaboration.
Go ahead, Commissioner Morgan.
Just one follow-up.
Sure.
I guess I'm concerned, I want to make sure the taxpayers of Kent County are fairly represented here in the agreement. And so we're not subsidizing other counties and using our resources, because it's an easier pathway, and I don't want that to be on the backs of Kent County taxpayers. So, I don't know if this is a... Wait a minute, Daryl, I'm not done.
I'm just waiting.
Okay. So, I guess my concern is that, are we, is this enough to recover our costs, and is it worth doing? I get the reporting relationships, I get all this, but I want to make sure that this contract is fair to the taxpayers of Kent County.
Daryl?
Yes, it is, and we are getting compensation from both Montcalm and Alleghan County. And the further benefit is they're doing some things in both counties that our staffs are benefiting from.
I'm not convinced, but...
I am.
Okay. Commissioner Antor, did you have a follow-up?
We're receiving $5,000 compensation from Montcalm.
Correct.
It just seems...
Me personally, yeah.
It just seems like they're getting...
It's crazy.
...an unbelievable deal, because through your efforts, they're going to be collecting a lot more money, I'm sure. And it just seems like we're providing an incredible service to them, which I'm not saying is bad or good, I don't know the inner workings of this, but five grand for your type of expertise, and obviously, they want you there for a reason. It just seems like a tremendous value for them, and if that's, I guess that's okay, as long as things are still going smoothly here. I just think you're worth more than that to that county right now. Maybe we should be compensated, or you should be compensated, or somebody should be getting more money for it.
Well, I think a point of clarification. I was trying to answer the question very with specificity in terms of what I was receiving. Montcalm County is paying $75,000 for their agreement, and that includes myself, an allocation of our deputies' time. Also, it includes contractual services for their commercial and industrial appraisals. And then, so that involves much more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Prior to this amendment, Alleghan County was paying $145,000 to Kent County, and the amendment that you have before the Alleghan one is simply shifting the costs from our budget to their budget, but their relative effort for the service stays the same. So I apologize if I was misleading, I was trying to answer with specificity what my compensation was, but my compensation is only a part of the overall components of the contracts.
But you have the Level 4 license.
I'm sorry?
But you have the Level 4 license.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Womack?
When it comes to time management, how are you able to do this within the different counties, with the time management of you and those that work with you?
Well, we've been leveraging technology to try to be quite mobile, so I have a cellphone, I have a laptop that can log in basically from anywhere. So on any given day, I can, I spend most of my time here in the Grand Rapids office. I spend about two days a month in Montcalm, and we have a full-time presence with our deputy down in Alleghan, so I'm not, don't have to be there as much. But that's really, one of the reasons that I am passionate about doing this, and I see true value, is I don't believe that we've actually gotten the most out of this that we're going to, hopefully, within the coming year. And that is, I believe that we've now created a business case to address the issue of technology and bringing multiple governmental units together under a common system. And I believe that's exactly the type of collaboration that we should be striving for, and so I've had several discussions independently with the information technology departments and the administrations in both units, and that is my primary focus for this goal, is focusing on answering the question and implementing a recommended solution that will allow us to bring these systems together, so that it's not just me who's working in a mobile capacity, but also the appraisers in each unit, also the staffs in each unit, so that we can try to achieve some synergies between the three, and evaluate whether multi-county equalization is a viable alternative in today's options of collaborations between governmental units.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Voorhees?
Thanks for a second. Daryl, when did we originally sign these contracts, and they are in effect to date, right? The dollar amounts and that? That's not part of this contract agreement, right? When did we initially approve those dollars amounts?
Well, we've been with Alleghan, or with Montcalm County for, this is our fifth year.
Yes.
And with Alleghan, this is our second...
We're just actually, we're ten months in here.
Just actually first year.
Yeah, our first year.
Completing our first year.
So that is when we went through what the dollar amount should be? That, when we signed those agreements?
Yes.
We had approved $5,000 in...
No.
The original agreement with Alleghan, if I may, Daryl?
Yeah.
Was $145,000, and we're amending that, and that was done in June of last year, and what you have before you is an amendment to that original contract.
I just, is this the time to debate the question, which is real, that Commissioner Morgan... I just, is this the time to debate the question, which is real that Mr. Morgan brings up, that when of the contract, we made the contract with the dollar amount of, well, then $145,000 part of that? But that's five years with Montcalm, or...
Go ahead with the... When did we start with Montcalm?
Well, at Montcalm, we started about five years ago, and that, they signed a one-year extension about three months ago, and it's up in December of this year.
And the amount?
The amount of that is $75,000 in Montcalm.
Okay, so we'll address that in December, the dollar amount.
Probably, yes. Correct. In addition to Allegan.
So what's before us is, do we want to amend the contract?
Correct.
With Allegan?
Correct.